All right. Welcome, everyone. Do we have everyone in the room today? Want to make sure everybody's here. All right. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the City of Chicago's substantial amendment to the 2021 Action Plan and our review of the 2022 Action Plan. We have a loaded agenda for you guys today that we're going to walk through. But before we get started, I'm going to hand it over to Meredith for quick housekeeping notes and communication options that we have. So Meredith, please feel free to jump in.
Thanks, Latoya. Hi, everyone. So we have a couple of accessibility options available on this call today. You should be able to see both the current speaker and an ASL interpreter at the same time on your screen. If you're in need of Spanish language interpretation, then there is a button sort of at the bottom with a little globe that says interpretation options. You can move over to Spanish. And then Erin, if you're able to allow the Spanish language interpreter to give that information in Spanish at this time, that would be great.
I believe our interpreter is saying that in the English room, if anyone's in English. If not, that's also okay. If you're not in English, you speak English, you're fine being in this room.
Perfect. All right. So I'm going to get back over to Latoya. Again, if you have any questions, you can put them into the Q and A and they'll address them once we get to that point in the meeting.
Thank you for that. So I just want to review the agenda really quickly and then we'll go into more details. So really quickly, I want to welcome you, like I said, to our substantial amendment and action plan review. I do want to do a quick review across our different departments so that they can do introductions for themselves, if that's okay. I'm Latoya Vaughn with the Office of Budget and Management, and I'm going to hand it off to Meredith.
Hi, everyone. My name is Meredith Muir. I'm with the Department of Housing. I will pass it over to Kim.
Hi, everyone. Kim Howard. I'm the Director with the Homeless Services Division of the Department of Family and Support Services. I will pass it over to Maura.
Good evening, everyone. Maura McCauley with the Department of Family and Support Services, Deputy Commissioner of Homeless and Domestic Violence Programs. I'll pass it over to Daniel.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm Daniel Hertz. I'm Director of Policy with the Chicago Department of Housing. And I will throw it to Raymond.
Everyone, my name is Raymond Barrett. I'm the Director of Planning, Research, and Development at the Department of Family and Support Services. I will pass it over to Kimberly Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Kimberly Taylor, Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities. I am Deputy Commissioner of Finance and Administration, and I will pass it over to Will Edwards.
I'm Will Edwards, Assistant Commissioner for Housing Preservation Programs with Department of Housing. Now pass it over to Joanne Newsom.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joanne Newsom, Deputy Commissioner at the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, and I'm going to pass it to Eric McMillan.
Hi. I'm Eric. Hi, I'm Eric McMillan, Department of Management, Deputy Commissioner. And I will pass it on to Patrick Schwain. Thank you.
Hi, this is Patrick Schwer, Director of Water Quality here for Department of Water Management. And I don't know who else has not been introduced.
I think that might be it. So so thank you all again for joining. I'm going to give you a quick overview of all of our HUD-funded programs. We also are going to give you a quick overview of the different dollars that we have allocated to these different programs, at least in a draft fashion. And then we're going to hand it over to our Department of Family and Support Services and Housing Department, who's going to talk to you more about the home program and eligible areas of funding there. And then we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2022 plan, in which we're going to outline the different programs that are funded or initiatives that are funded or proposed to be funded under that program. And then, of course, we'll open it up for any questions that we have, that you guys may have. We will open it up for questions for the home section first, and then we're going to have a separate set of sections of questions for the 2022 Action Plan. Right. One thing I do want to mention is all of our comments, we're going to ask if you guys, once you review the plan, if you have any comments, you can always respond to us before August 5th, and we have different mechanisms in which you guys can respond to us. Right. So our Community Development Block Grant is one of the programs that are funded under the HUD portfolio. The Department of Housing and Urban Development provides funding for different types of programs, and the CBG program is under that umbrella. The Community Development Block Grant provides community development funding for activities to build a stronger and more resilient community. Activities may address needs such as infrastructure, economic development projects, public facilities, installations, community centers, housing rehabilitation, public services, clearance and acquisition, micro enterprise assistance, code enforcement, and homeownership assistance, as well as other programs that might be eligible for low and low moderate income people. The Emergency Solutions Grant supports the need for homeless people in emergency or transitional shelters to assist people in quickly regaining stability and permanent housing after experiencing a housing crisis and/or homelessness. The Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS Program provides funding for housing assistance and related support services for low-income persons living with HIV/AIDS and their families. The Home Investment Partnership Program supports a wide range of activities, including building, buying, or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership, or providing direct rental assistance to low-income people. We're also going to talk to you guys about the Home Investment Partnership Program under the American Rescue Plan, and that provides funding to assist individuals or households who are homeless or at risk of homelessness and other vulnerable populations by providing housing, rental assistance, support services, and non-congregate shelter to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability across the country. There are, I'm sorry, four major areas that are eligible activities that could be funded under this particular grant program. They are for the production or preservation of affordable housing, for tenant-based rental assistance, for support services or homeless prevention services, housing counseling, and for purchase and development of non-congregate shelters. The last is the duplicate of our Housing Opportunity for AIDS Program. Now, I'm going to hand it off to our Department of Family and Support Services and Housing for review of the Home ARP program.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Again, Daniel Hertz with the Department of Housing, and I'm going to talk briefly about the Home ARP grant in particular and how, what it's intended to do, how it works, and some of the breakdown in the proposed spending here today. So, as you just heard, Home ARP is a grant from HUD that intends to provide capital investment to permanent housing, to upgrade existing housing and shelter, as well as to provide rental assistance and supportive services to provide housing stability to low-income tenants who require that. And you can find more details and fact sheets on these activities by scanning the QR code on the screen. So the City of Chicago today is talking about a $71.17 million Home ARP grant from HUD through the American Rescue Plan Act that was intended to provide additional funding in the wake of the COVID pandemic administered by the Home Investment Partnership Program, and which can be spent through September 30th of 2030. Just for a little bit of context, this funding comes from, as I said, the American Rescue Plan, which provided $5 billion from Congress to assist people and households who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, as well as other vulnerable populations through direct housing provision, rental assistance, supportive services, and non-congregate shelter. Next slide, please. So the hearing today is one additional step of what has been a sort of multi-month community feedback process and how the city will spend its Home ARP dollars. So after the passage of the American Rescue Plan, this began when the Chicago Continuum of Care convened a relief funding working group and submitted recommendations to the City of Chicago on funding to put Chicago closer to our shared goal of preventing and ending homelessness in the city. Those recommendations then served as the basis for the city's proposal for Home ARP funding, which was shared back with the community for additional input in the spring of this year. The Department of Housing and the Department of Family and Support Services have jointly held three public opportunities for community input on this plan. The first was on Tuesday, May 31st. Then there was a feedback session specifically for people with lived experience of homelessness or gender-based violence or housing instability on Monday, June 6th. Then there was another meeting, a broader meeting on Thursday, June 16th, and then obviously, there's also this hearing today. DFSS and DOH have also asked for written feedback through an online survey that was open in May and June, as well as during this whole process, a variety of stakeholders, including homeless service providers, domestic violence service providers, public and private organizations that address fair housing and civil rights, have all been engaged as part of this process of determining how to spend these Home ARP dollars. Next slide, please. An important piece of Home ARP as a grant is that there are four so-called qualifying populations who can be served by programs funded by this grant. So those four qualifying populations are, number one, people who are currently experiencing homelessness, people who, number two, people who are at risk of homelessness, number three, people who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual violence, stalking, or human trafficking. And then the fourth qualifying population is any other population where supportive services or assistance could either prevent a family's homelessness or assist those at greatest risk of housing instability. And you can see there's a little bit more information here in the deck, which we'll post about exactly what that means. Importantly, every jurisdiction like Chicago that receives Home ARP funding has to provide services that are open to all four of these qualifying populations. However, and we'll talk about this more in a second, cities like Chicago can implement a preference system to establish the order in which applicants are admitted to housing and shelter, which is to say, we can create set-asides that prioritize one or another of these populations or sub-populations on this slide. Next slide, please. So that prioritization really gets to prioritization. I want to emphasize that while this hearing is specifically about Home ARP dollars, grant funding from the federal government, the Department of Housing and Department of Family and Support Services are also using funds from the Chicago Recovery Plan, which is funding that is locally generated by the City of Chicago to mix with this and stretch these dollars further to provide more housing than we would be able to otherwise. So as it says here, we anticipate that the Home ARP funds, about 25.7 million of those, will be sufficient to produce about 93 new units of permanent supportive housing. And in addition to that, the Chicago Recovery Plan dollars, about 35 million, will be enough to support about 127 new units of permanent supportive housing for a total of 220. Now, across all of that housing, so across all 220 units, all $70.7 million between Home ARP and the Chicago Recovery Plan, the proposed prioritizations, set-asides are on the bottom half of this slide. So 64% or 140 of those units are proposed to be prioritized for households currently experiencing homelessness. Within that 140, 50 of those are being set aside for returning residents who have an arrest or conviction history. 16% of the total 220 units, or 35 units, are proposed to be set aside to prioritize doubled-up households who are currently not experiencing street homelessness, but who are experiencing housing instability in living with another household in unstable situation. An additional 16% or 35 units are dedicated to returning residents, again, people with a conviction or arrest history. And finally, 5% or 11 units of permanent supportive housing are proposed to be prioritized for survivors of gender-based violence and human trafficking. And with that, for some more details on Home ARP, I will turn it over to my colleague, Kim, from the Department of Family and Support Services.
Thanks, Daniel. And hi, everyone. Kim Howard, Director of the Homeless Services. I'm at the Department of Family and Support Services. And so I will start with transitioning into a full breakdown of the Home ARP proposal. So in line with the overarching goals for the Department of Sporting Housing, the first proposed funding allocation of the $71 million in Home ARP funding is for $25,672,340 for development of new permanent supportive housing units. As Daniel said, these PSH units were for people experiencing homelessness, doubled-up households, returning citizens, and survivors of gender-based violence. The way that this will be implemented is the city will release one or more requests for proposals or qualifications for other funding solicitations to select developers and contractors to administer and develop these new 93 units. And preference in that process would be given to PSH projects that are dedicated to the above qualifying populations. And we are also proposing allocation of $10 million in supportive services, specifically to be dedicated to households to be served in those new permanent supportive housing units. We estimate that that $10 million, which are roughly 130 households per year, period, and these funds would be awarded for a competitive main process as well. In coordination with the PSH competitive funding process, preference would also be given to projects dedicated to the same qualifying populations. We're also proposing allocation of $20 million in Home ARP funding to the acquisition of non-congregate shelters, defined as shelters where each household has access to their own room and bathroom. We're estimating that this investment could support transition of roughly 300 charter boats for people experiencing homelessness, or for domestic violence, student violence, social violence, stalking, or human trafficking. Funding for these projects would also be administered through a competitive funding process, so exact impact will depend on selected projects. We're also proposing allocation of $6 million for temporary parental assistance or TBRAs. This would fund a pilot program that we estimate could serve approximately 75 households annually, I can provide a summary of their period. And this pilot would provide parental assistance, security deposit assistance, utility deposits, and utility payments to households who have previously qualified as homeless or currently housed due to temporary assistance and who need additional housing assistance to avoid returning homelessness. And just to note that this application also includes individuals and households who are fleeing domestic violence. And the remaining breakdown of our Home ARP proposal would be allocated for operating capacity, capacity building, and administrative planning to carry out the activities of the Home ARP grant. And so first, we're proposing $3 million for nonprofit operating costs, which can include employee salaries, rent, utilities, insurance, all four to the nonprofit agencies that will be funded for implementation of the Home ARP projects and activities that we just walked through. Second, we're proposing $1.5 million for nonprofit capacity building, which would be for operating costs that would result in expansion or improvement of an agency's ability to successfully carry out Home ARP activities. So eligible costs could include salaries for new hires, cost related to training, or your commitment. And lastly, $5 million we are proposing to be allocated for administration and planning, which could go to the cities that are substantial subcontractors to administer the Home ARP program, including project management, coordination, monitoring, and evaluation. So with that, I will turn it over to Latoya to talk through how to provide public comment on this draft allocation plan and where to find the entire write-up of the plan that we just briefly walked through today.
All right. Thank you, Kim. So you can find information on the Home ARP allocation plan on the City of Chicago's website under cityofchicago.gov-grants or backslash, I'm sorry, cityofchicago.org/budget. And under the budget site, we have a grant section, but if you need a quick link, you can always access it by clicking the link on the documents that we're going to provide after this hearing. You can also submit your comments to our office. We're located at 121 North LaSalle, Room 604, and you can direct it to myself, Latoya Vaughn. We're also accepting comments via email at grantsupport@cityofchicago.org. You can provide all of your comments through August 5th, or you can contact us if you have any follow-up questions or concerns. You can always reach us at 312-744-7755. We will do our best to respond within five days. We'll coordinate with the relevant department on any questions that you guys may have. Thank you. All right. So now, we're going to go into the second part of our hearing, unless you guys have any questions. I'm sorry. Do you have any questions for Home ARP?
Thanks, Latoya. Yeah, I'm seeing a couple of questions coming in through the Q and A, so I think we can try to answer live what we can today.
Hi, Kim. There's some issue with your audio. It's causing some difficulty with interpretation. Is it okay if Mara does the Q and A session?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry about that.
Thanks.
Yeah, Kim, you may want to try turning up your volume because that helped last time, but I'll get going. So again, if you have questions or comments, you can feel free to raise your hand. I'm going to get going by starting to go through the questions that came in through the chat. So the first question is, will survivors of gender-based violence and human trafficking be preferred within other populations, serve for PSH, for example, within doubled-up households? Often survivors are living doubled up to divert from shelters. Will they be prioritized within doubled-up households? I think, you know, I think that's an open question, Jackie. Obviously, survivors would be eligible if they are doubled up, and they would be eligible through the set-aside. In our allocation plan currently, there's not an additional prioritization, but I think that is something operationally that could be talked about at the program level. Then Chris is asking, will any of these recommendations be presented at the city budget meeting, the budget engagement forums this week and next week? Latoya, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to give it a try?
So those forums are going to be open for any recommendations or conversations that you guys want to have with the city. I know that the mayor will be at some of those hearings, if not all of them. So, you know, these are open conversations, and it's the right time to have that conversation.
And then will these slides be provided or posted anywhere?
Yes, we'll post this presentation or copies of this presentation will be available on the City of Chicago's website at www.chicago.gov. And we're going to put the exact link in the chat so that you guys can click that link to access this presentation.
Okay. Then the next question, for the 35 units for returning citizens that was not included in the 140 units for people experiencing homelessness, could those units include people living doubled up? How are they distinct from the first ones listed under the 140? Daniel, or anyone from DOH, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I can try to respond to this. So for the first question, could the 35 units for returning citizens, returning residents be included? Could that include people living doubled up? Yes, potentially. So definitely recognize that all of these categories are frequently overlapping rather than completely separate. And so people who fall into more than one of these qualifying populations are certainly eligible for, you know, for inclusion within their prioritization for, you know, one of the populations that they fit into. So that's a long way of saying, yes, that could potentially include people who are doubled up. And how are the 35 units separate for returning citizens different from the 50 that are part of the people experiencing homelessness? Prioritization set aside, essentially, it is a broader category. So while the 50 units within the homelessness set aside, all of those all of those units are all of those people served in that set aside would have to be experiencing homelessness, as well as currently experiencing homelessness, as well as being returning residents. Those in the returning resident set aside of 35 units could include serving people who are, for example, just leaving custody of the Department of Corrections, for example, and who, because they are, you know, transitioning directly from state custody to permanent supportive housing, they don't have a step in the middle of experiencing homelessness. So it's a little bit broader than the first category in that way.
Thank you. Then we have a question. Will individuals who are required to list as sex offenders be eligible for housing?
So I am not fully certain. I'll invite anybody from the Department of Housing or elsewhere who can confidently answer that. Otherwise, obviously, we can provide answers after this. I just want to be certain in our answers.
So we can follow up on that question. If you can leave your information. Actually, I think we'll have to make this a public response. So any of the questions that we have to respond to, we'll do our best to record everything, and then we'll post that to the same link that's in the chat. So please check that site frequently.
Mara, just to let you know, there also is a hand that's raised. I don't know if you're, a couple of hands that are raised, so. Mara, just to let you know, there also is a hand that's raised. I don't know if you're, a couple of hands that are raised. So.
Oh, I can't. Yeah, I cannot see raised hands right now. Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, why don't we take some verbal comments? I see Amy Burke.
Amy, I think you have the ability to talk right now. I don't know. Okay, your hand's down. So I'll switch to Mary then.
Okay. Should I start?
Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. And let me know when my two minutes is up. Thank you for the chance to provide comment today. My name is Mary Elsner. I am representing the Collaborative on Child Homelessness Illinois, which is a project of the Illinois Chapter, American Academy of Pediatrics. Can you hear me? I just, I have a voice that's not projecting today. The chapter is headquartered in Chicago with more than 2,000 pediatrician members, the majority of whom provide medical care to children and youth in Chicago and surrounding communities. We are requesting that the City of Chicago allocate $34.5 million for 75 units of housing with supportive services for Chicago residents who live doubled up. The majority of families who experience housing insecurity are doubled up. Recent data shows an astounding 15,983 Chicago public school students were categorized as living doubled up during the 2021, 2022 school year. And just as concerning, an estimated 4,139 children from birth through age four were temporarily staying with others in 2019, the most current data we have. Yet children who live in families who are doubled up experience many of the same immediate and lifelong health risks and outcomes associated with literal homelessness, including developmental delays, lack of school readiness, and school failure, but are ineligible for the majority of federally funded programs that are addressing homelessness tied to the strict definition. There are a myriad of ways in which housing insecurity negatively impacts the developing brain, increases the likelihood of chronic disease over a lifetime. Evidence shows that the effects of housing insecurity compound over time and with repeated instances. This is true not only for young children living through episodes of housing insecurity, but also for those born to an individual who experienced housing insecurity during pregnancy. The City of Chicago now has the opportunity to allocate federal funds not tied to that strict definition of homelessness for those children who live doubled up. And they should do so. Let's prevent the risk of unstable housing and intergenerational harm to children and families rather than paying for the immediate and lifelong consequences afterwards. We urge the City of Chicago to target more resources through an equitable lens to those who are doubled up, especially for children and families in extremely low-income households who are clearly falling through the cracks in our city. Thank you.
Okay, Mara, if you want to take another verbal comment, there's a Beth with her, with their hand up, so I can go to Beth. Okay. Beth, you can unmute yourself now.
Hello there. Beth Wana, I work with LEC, but I'm going to be speaking from lived experience today rather than professional capacity. I just wanted to point out that at each of these, well, any platform where I'm able to speak about lived experience, I consistently asked about beds for the queer community and beds for undocumented people. And I see gender-based violence. I see ways of trying to include the queer community, but I don't see any specific places for queer people, and that is a safe space for queer people, where it is just queer people allowed to be. I am a queer person. I have been homeless in this city. I'm also a survivor of human trafficking, and I consider being both undocumented and queer two of the largest parts of my experience in this city and failing to find resources being a large part of that, too. I'm struggling to find a platform where I'm able to communicate these concerns to the city in a capacity that they're able to respond. I would consider this worthy of emergency funding that's provided by the federal government, considering the lack of capacity we have right now for undocumented people and people who identify as LGBTQIA+. The secondary statement, I just wanted to say, I just, I see a really, really long list of funders and providers here that have been sought out and spoken to, to see what they need from this. When I was in the lived experience group, it was but a handful of people. I don't see any of the recommendations made by people with lived experience reflected in this plan. I'd love to know more about the process of how you centered that voice from those few people with lived experience that you had in the forum and see more how you incorporated that in the plan, this money over the needs of organizations overall.
Okay, Amy, you are now allowed to talk. Oh. Okay, you're now allowed to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you very much. I am speaking, I offer this comment on behalf of Charge, the Chicago Homelessness and Health Response Group for Equity, a broad multi-sector coalition convened in medical centers, social service agencies, advocacy groups, and local government departments to address homelessness as a public health crisis. We believe that the home ARP allocation must include provision for creating more robust extreme weather response plan, one that includes ability to ramp up and scale down services and save lives on winter's harshest nights and summer's hottest days. We view this as a public health impairment imperative. And just, I'm new to this, so I'm seeing this might not exactly fit into the home ARP allocation, but we want to bring it to presence and see where we can get this issue addressed. And we are aligned, supportive, and grateful to the partners at the city and the Continuum of Care Relief Funding Working Group, who emphasize the importance of the Housing First Model, non-congregate shelter linkages to supportive services and an expansion of permanent supportive housing as primary responses to preventing and ending functional homelessness in Chicago. At the same time, we recognize that year after year, our collective response to Chicago's extreme weather events has failed to provide accessible and low-barrier services for people who are living unsheltered. In the winter, the result too often is suffering through the winter at best and frostbite, amputation, getting sick and sicker, and death at worst. To continue operating in this way is untenable, is more expensive than emergency department costs, and annually destroys trust with the communities we are striving to serve. So this winter in particular, with the Omicron surge, snowstorms, life-threatening temperatures, all hit Chicago at the same time with too few shelter beds that were available to those who wanted them, not enough outreach teams were activated to find those who needed them, and transitioned to and delayed or unavailable for people living through it on Chicago streets.
Hi, Amy. Thank you. You reached your two minutes, but I appreciate your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mara, there's no more hands that are up. So I don't know if there's any more questions in the chat that you want to address.
Let's see. There's a question around. Let's see, there's a question around who determines who gets housed first? Is it the COC? I think this question is really how do these qualifying populations factor in amongst each other? If that's not correct, I would just ask the person who asked the question to clarify. And I'm going to need either DOH or Kim, if you're able to respond.
Yeah, I can, I can begin, but Kim, definitely welcome your chiming in. So the, the short answer, I think, is that the, there, there may be different referral networks pathways for each of the prioritized qualifying populations. So some of them may use COC and the Coordinated Entry System, while others may not. I'm not sure if we have more information about that later in the presentation, or Kim, if there's anything else you wanted to say about that.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just to add a little bit of detail to that, and this will be included in the allocation plan that is now posted for review. So a lot of this is written up. That will be the place to find this additional detail. But to quickly walk through, as we stated with our permanent supportive housing and the company supportive services, we have sort of four qualifying populations that we're hoping to serve with those resources. And for the sort of qualifying population one, there are folks experiencing literal homelessness or envisioning that they, those projects would take direct referral from the Chicago Coordinated Entry System, including sort of identification of clients within that group who have previously been incarcerated. And the Chicago Coordinated Entry Systems is the standardized assessment to prioritize hospitals for housing resources. And the current prioritization plan is around folks who are most at risk for serious homelessness complications from COVID-19 projects, but that would be updated, that referral would be updated in response to any changes to that coordinated entry prioritization plan. Projects that would be dedicated to serving qualifying population three or folks who are gender-based violence or human trafficking and would take direct referral from the Chicago Domestic Violence Coordinated Entry System. And projects dedicated to serving doubled up households where either to take direct referral from an expanded coordinated entry system or from relevant sources to the project. And then projects dedicated to serving the reentry population would also receive referrals outside of the coordinated entry system and specifically through relevant organizations like the Illinois Department of Corrections or community-based organizations that serve returning citizens.
Thank you. Then what is the criteria for organizations eligible to apply for this opportunity?
That, so this is Daniel again. That I am not, sort of not fully prepared to answer. I'm not sure if anybody else on the call is. I assume that the question here is for the eventual RFP that was referred to here. What exactly are the criteria for organizations that they must meet to apply? I'm not sure if those have been fully drafted yet. Obviously, the RFPs don't exist yet and won't until this plan has been finalized and approved. Oh, thank you. So Latoya Vaughn has posted in the chat, all RFP opportunities and eligibility criteria will be posted at the link she has she's posted in the chat. So I think that may be what we can answer now, and it sounds like those eligibility criteria will need to be determined once the RFPs can be written after the plan's been approved.
Okay, and there's another question about when RFPs will be released. And I think the the timelines vary based on the, the different activities, the shelter. Some of the shelter RFPs are tentatively scheduled to be released, you know, at the fourth quarter of this year. And the rest are kind of, you know, probably moving into 2023. Daniel, I don't know if you have anything on the DOH side for housing?
Not, I don't think we have a firm timeline, but that sounds right, probably likely by early 2023.
Mara, you're on mute if you're talking, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Will the reentry housing allocations drop the requirement that individuals meet the federal definitions of homelessness and chronic homelessness, which disqualify people exiting prison? And will applicants have the, an opportunity to provide housing outside the scope of the coordinated entry system and COC?
Yes, that one I can answer. The answer to both of these questions is yes, with respect to the reentry, the reentry prioritization of the 35 units. Both will not necessarily have to meet the federal definition of homelessness, and there will be opportunities, as, as we discussed, for referral pathways outside of CES.
Okay.
Mara, I want to, if I can, just jump in to address the Beth's question on input from lived experience, which I think is a great question. So again, this, there's a little bit more detail on this in the allocation plan that can be reviewed. But we had 20 individuals participate in the community feedback session for people with lived experience. And we received 12 responses through the feedback survey from folks who identified as having lived experience of homelessness, housing instability, or gender-based violence. I think we got really wonderful feedback that you'll see sort of summarized in the allocation plan. I will note that a lot of the feedback was particularly around implementation of the plan. So it's sort of reflected less in the allocation of funding that was talked through today, but will be key in sort of implementing and releasing funding opportunities for this funding. So just to give sort of an example of that, one piece of feedback that we heard was, you know, how do we ensure that sort of new jobs created with these resources are going to people with lived experience of homelessness? How do we make sure we're sort of funding organizations that can support youth who've experienced homelessness and contributing to sort of the design of these programs? And so those considerations, while sort of not reflected in the sort of total funding allocations that we've talked through today, I think will need to be reflected in the RFPs and funding opportunities where this funding is actually released.
Thanks. And I just will note that Beth's hand is up. I don't know if Beth wants to add to this, but I don't know. Okay. You can unmute yourself now to answer to provide.
Yeah. Comparatively, what are the numbers of service providers and funders that you asked for input?
So we have, again, in the allocation plan, sort of a list of organizations and individuals. I'm I'm not sure I can calculate the percentage off the top of my head, but that's something we can answer publicly in the next five days.
Okay. Beth, there's some additional questions around undocumented people and shelter bed expansion and permanent supportive housing. Doc, being documented is not a requirement of this funding, so in our funding applications, you know, housing and, and shelter opportunities will be eligible for providers and programs that also serve undocumented individuals and families. Okay. And then there's a question about the current number of beds for trans, mask, transphem, and non-binary people. And currently, the city does not fund any dedicated beds for those populations. So that is an area that needs to be focused on.
Mara, there's no more hands up in the in this area, so we may be able to move forward with the next part of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Erin, and thank you to everybody who participated in the first session regarding the home ARP. We're going to now cross over into the next phase of the presentation, which is going to cover the fiscal year 2020. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we jump to the next slide. If you have any questions or any follow-up items that you would like to verbalize or put in writing, you can always contact us at grantsupport@citychicago.org, or you can send a letter to us at City Hall 121 North LaSalle, Room 604, Chicago, Illinois 60602, and you can address it to myself, Latoya Vaughn, and I will coordinate with the departments on the appropriate responses. We ask that you give us five days to respond. If you have any questions and you'd like to talk to us or someone at OBM, you can always reach out to 312-744-7755, and we can direct you to the resources that you may need. So thank you again. The next section of this presentation, we're going to cover the 2022 action plan and the proposed programs to be funded under this plan. So every five years, sorry, you can go to the next slide. Every five years, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the city to create a consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan that is focused on assessing affordable housing, providing community and economic development with considerations for the market conditions and data that's used to identify the best areas for investment across our community, 77 community areas, and also based on the need. We are in the third year of our current conflict, which covers the 2020 to 2024 year. The 2022 action plan includes investments in affordable housing, development, homeownership programs, homeless programs, HIV AIDS programs, public facilities and infrastructure, public services, including workforce, senior services, services for people with disabilities, lead poisoning services, and domestic violence services, to name a few. The purpose of this hearing is to give you an opportunity to provide your input on the program recommendations for funding distribution in our 2022 plan. We're going to present next our city departments who are going to be responsible for implementing and managing the various programs under the community development portfolio, and each department is going to go into a more detailed description into the specific programs that their department offers. I'm going to give you a quick overview of the available estimated available funding that we have. Some is going to be what we call BASEA WORP, which is the new allocation that we get annually from HUD. And then we also have carryover resources or unprogrammed resources from prior year that have not been spent. And so I'm going to go right into the estimated funding. So in total, we are estimating about 100, basically 200 million in anticipated funding, which includes 74 million in unprogrammed dollars from the CDVG program. So our CDVG program, which is a total of over 270 million. So our community development block grant, also known as our CDVG program, we're anticipating to receive 76.2 million in funding for this annual cycle, and we also have 74 million in unprogrammed dollars that we can reallocate. That's a total of 150.2 million in CDVG funds. Our proposed uses are to cover domestic violence, food assistance, homelessness, mental health, senior services, violence prevention, workforce training, services, small repairs, and homeownership counseling, as well as a few other programs that we'll document that we'll provide in detail. We also have our home investment partnership program, also known as HOME. We're, we have received 21.6 million in base funding for our annual allocation, and we also anticipate 12.1 million in unprogrammed funding for programming from program income, which it will also include the 71.2 million that we just discussed in HOME ARP for a total of 105 million. Then we have our emergency solutions grant, which is, we've received 6.7 million in base or annual funding from HUD. And these proposed uses are for rental assistance, rapid rehousing, homeless shelters, and outreach. And then we have our housing opportunities for people with AIDS, and our annual funding this year is 11.4 from HUD. And these proposed uses are for HIV housing and support services. Next slide, we're going to go into the actual program details. These are a breakout of the quick elements from the CDVG program. Once again, the CDVG program provides funding for community development and public service to benefit low, moderate income persons throughout the city of Chicago. We're going to, in a second, talk about the different allocations across the departments, which includes housing services, 66 million, infrastructure services at 15 million, homeless services at 12 million, mental health services at 10.6 million. And then we have administrative support for 10.8 million. We also have code enforcement and strategic task force at 10.2 million, workforce services at 6.8 million. Lead prevention is proposed at 4.8 million, disability resources is proposed for 3.7 million. Senior services is proposed at 3.6 million, domestic violence services is proposed at 3 million. Fair housing and educational outreach services is at 1.8 million. Proposed human services is 1.2, violence prevention is 500,000, and HIV prevention is 355,000. So these are all of the programs that falls under our community development block grant, and we're going to go into detail next, and you'll hear from the different departments about the programs that they offer. So next slide, please. All right, we're going to hand it over to Raymond with our Department of Family Support Services.
Hey, everyone. My name is Raymond Barrett. I am with the Department of Family and Support Services. We are in charge of delivering a lot of the human services components to individuals in the city of Chicago, going from birth all the way to an individual as a senior. The FSS is composed of seven divisions, children's services, youth services, workforce services, domestic violence services, homeless support services, human services, and then senior services. And we do, or we accomplish all of these tasks primarily through awarding funds, primarily the grant funds, to sub recipients or delegate agencies. And we also have six community support or community service centers, which also help us distinguish and identify and support individuals across the city of Chicago. In addition, we also have six regional senior centers and 15 satellite senior centers that also provide various types of support services. Next slide, please. So for the community development block grant funds that the FSS receives, they are divided among our various divisions that I mentioned before. The first one being homeless support services, which is $12 million, and this goes to the funding of around 30 or so shelters, of which last year, emergency shelter program provided support to over 12,000 individuals, which just demonstrates the extreme need that the city of Chicago has for affordable housing and permanent supportive housing units. That was mentioned earlier in this public chair. Additionally, through our work services program, we receive 6.8 million, and this goes to over 60 different contracts for multiple programs within our workforce division, including our employment preparation and placement program, our industry-specific training and placement program, and our traditional transitional jobs programs. These programs exist to essentially provide career navigation for various types of individuals. We focus to be on the program on returning citizens or individuals experiencing homelessness. In the industry-specific training and placement program, we very much focus on providing career skills to high priority industry sectors such as healthcare or transportation, distribution, logistics. This division itself has been working very hard from the pandemic to really reanalyze how we're delivering human services, both at the reentry level and homelessness level, and works also with our youth services division as well. In addition, we get 3.6 million for our senior services division, and this is split, not necessarily in half, but it's split between our home delivered meals program, which you may see those various little trucks drive around the city, delivering meals to seniors. And that in 2021, we had over 8,000 seniors receiving those home delivered meals, which was an extreme uptick because of the COVID pandemic. Outside of CDVG, that program is also RFPing or request for proposing, expanding its meal options to provide more equitable meals to various seniors. Also, that funding goes to two other programs, which is our case advocacy services and intensive case advocacy services. These are for seniors that are identified for being very vulnerable or at risk for various reasons, and so it provides case managers either in the short term or in the long term, and provide them the correct supportive services that they need. And that, those two programs combined served around 1,200 individuals last year. In our cert human services division, we receive about 1.2 million. This goes entirely to the great greater Chicago food depository, which has over 100 food banks or about 100 food banks in the city of Chicago, all over the city, for anyone who's at risk and needs to have access to food. And this also is another program in which we saw an extreme need because of the COVID pandemic. And last, we have the domestic violence services, which received $3 million in CDVG funding. And this serves a lot of our different programs. I won't necessarily name all of them, but I'll try to summarize them in the best non-jargon-y way possible, which is just essentially providing individuals who are experiencing various types of domestic violence or sexual assault or human trafficking, and providing them those legal advocacy services, counseling, working with CPT or other corrections institutions to support individuals going through this process. And that last year, that was over 11,000 people who were served through these various types of programs. A next slide, please. The other HUD entitlement grant funding that we receive is through the emergency solutions grant, also known as ESG, and we're projecting at 6.7 million. This funding is for people who are either chronically homeless or at risk of homeless homelessness, and that supports a couple of different programs. The first one kind of mentioned earlier, but is it's your emergency shelters. We also provide homeless prevention services, which are for those individuals who are low income and very much, but maybe becoming homeless and helping prevent eviction. And we also have funding for rapid rehousing, which is very much what the name sounds like. It is trying to get individuals off the street and into a temporary living situation to eventually permanently housed. And then there's also various funds for outreach and engagement as well. Next slide. Okay, and so I will pass off to the Department of Health for their portion.
Thank you, Raymond. I'm going to cover some of the CDPH information, and if you have any follow-ups, please make sure you put them in the chat, and we will respond to any questions on the public website. So just be on the lookout for that. Our Department of Public Health, their vision is thriving communities across the city of Chicago where all residents are able to live healthy. Their mission is to promote and improve health by engaging residents, communities, and partners in establishing and implementing policies and services that prioritize residents and communities with the greatest need. Their values are diversity, excellence, informed decision-making, and teamwork. Next slide, please. These are the programs that our Department of Public Health is proposing for this plan for mental health services. They are proposing 10.6 in mental health services. This is broken up into two separate components. One is general mental health services, and the other is mental health services and prevention for education for childhood sexual assault victims. They also have 4.8 million in lead prevention services for screening for lead. Violence prevention is funded at 500,000. A portion of that goes for violence prevention and restorative practices, and the other portion goes towards bullying and suicide prevention. They also have 356,000 dedicated to HIV prevention services, which includes education, screening, and treatment of adolescents with sexually transmitted infections. Next slide. That funding is coupled with funding that they receive also from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS program. This program receives 11.4 million in funding, and it's focused on providing housing assistance and related supportive supportive services for low-income persons living with HIV AIDS and their families. Next slide. I'm going to hand it over to our Department of Housing, and we have Will Edwards and to, to, thanks, Will.
Good evening. I'll give our overview for Department of Housing. Our mission, the Chicago Department of Housing, expands access and choice for residents and protects their right to quality homes that are affordable, safe, and healthy. Our vision is equitable distribution of resources across all 77 communities, so that every Chicagoan can choose a remaining quality housing that's affordable, safe, and healthy. And our values, the work of the Chicago Department of Housing is to develop and promote quality, affordable, safe, and healthy homes across all 77 communities, putting Chicagoans proximate to resources they need to thrive at every age. This work is radical. It demands that we challenge systems. It requires our action and collaboration. It means fighting historically racist lending and investment policies, local resistance to progress, and deeply rooted patterns of segregation in our city. It creates public stewards committed to building community wealth and housing as a human right. Next slide, please. $66 million is broken out into multiple categories, and Meredith Mer is going to help describe these categories. Between the two of us, we'll cover all that are on this page. Meredith?
Thanks, Will. So I will cover the the categories that fall under our delegate agency portfolio. So at first is the neighborhood lending work and home purchase assistance. That, as well as the neighborhood lending and home rehabilitation assistance is through the neighborhood lending program. We have homeownership counseling services that's counseling and workshop services that are for people who are looking to become homebuyers, who currently are homeowners and people who are trying to avoid foreclosure situations. We have housing services, technical assistance, which is community-based. These are neighborhood-based organizations that serve as hubs of information for a variety of housing resources that are available. They provide referrals to a whole bunch of different programs and services available throughout the city. And then I'll hit on briefly the small accessibility repairs for seniors. This is a program that provides small and home accessibility and safety repairs for senior residents. I'll pass it back over to Will to cover the other various topics.
Roof and porch repair program and emergency heating program help homeowners make improvements to their homes. The roof and porch program specifically provides grants to owners and occupants of one-to-four unit residential buildings for improvements on their roof and porches. Households earning 80% or below a very immediate income may be eligible to participate in the program. Eligible properties must be located in Chicago, habitable, owner-occupied, and not at risk of foreclosure. The applicant's name must be listed in the deed of the property for a minimum of one year at the time of application. The troubled building initiative is a tool to help reclaim troubled and abandoned buildings that create dangerous hazardous conditions for residents, neighbors, and first responders. TBI works with existing owners and lien holders, primarily through the housing court process, in the use of receivers and by the acquisition of distress notes and liens to prevent these buildings from deteriorating into a state of disrepair. The heat receivership program is an emergency program that we operate through the winter to ensure that city of Chicago residents do not go without heat. to in uh ensure that uh city of Chicago residents do not go without heat and are not subject to the uh cold weather that uh Chicago faces every year. And the multi unit development services are also connected to T B I and a resource for utilizing the court process to bring buildings and disrepair to uh to justice and create opportunities for receivership for those buildings.
Lastly, I'll just add that the Department of Housing receives funding through the Home Investment Partnership Grant. These funds are used for a wide range of activities, including acquiring, developing and or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership. With that, I will pass it over. We'll pass it over to the mayor's office for people with disabilities.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Kimberly Taylor, Deputy Commissioner of the Finance and Act. The mayor's office for people with disabilities is the arm of the city that makes sure that citizens of Chicago and visitors too um are able to live, work and play in accessible environment. We do that in a number of ways with our C D G funding. Um, one, we have staffing that allocate for individuals with disabilities. And two, our delegate agencies, if we can turn to the next slide. And we have three programs, home modification program, disability resources, as well as our independent living program. Under our home modification program, citizens are allowed to receive accessible modifications so that they can remain in their homes and communities. We also provide modifications for rentals as well. Under our disability resource unit, we have information and referral staff that advocate. I mean, have people with disabilities, they call our offices. And then last but definitely not least, um we have delegate agencies in our independent living program that provide personal assistance and assessment services with assistive devices. And I'll pass it on to Department of Human Relations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanne Newsom, Deputy Commissioner at the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. The Commission on Human Relations, or some people refer to us as C C H R, enforces the Chicago Human Rights Ordinance and the Chicago Fair Housing Ordinance, which are the city's two anti discrimination ordinances through the investigation and adjudication of discrimination complaints. That's one side of our office. The other side of our office really works in community by supporting victims of hate crimes. We conduct human relations workshops for schools and community organizations. And we mediate community tensions, including disputes between neighbors and disputes between community residents and local merchants. Our C B G funds, the the C C H R does not um provide grant funding. Um, our C D C D B G fund exclusively to support staff salaries. Thank you.
All right, our uh we have Marlene here with our Department of Buildings. And um they also support code enforcement activities, which our law department, law, oh, sorry, our law department um also assists with. So I'm gonna hand it off to Marlene with our Department of Buildings.
Good evening. The Department of Buildings is responsible for enhancing safety and quality of life for all Chicagoans and our residents and visitors through our permitting, our inspections, as well as our trade licensing and code enforcement activities. We, our funding is for staffing purposes only. We do not fund any initiatives. And our um workforce focuses on areas in the city that are have been underserved and have uh property owners that are not maintaining their buildings in safe living conditions, particularly our multi unit um buildings. We work very closely with our partners in the Department of Housing during the winter for uh the appointment of receivers for heat, um as well as we work very closely with our partners in the Department of Housing for services for our seniors. And um the law department handles a lot of our adjudication cases in circuit court where they are working with property owners um and holding them accountable for making the needed repairs to their buildings. And when they fail to do so, um the attorneys then are asking the court to appoint a city of a city approved authorized receiver to make the needed repairs in an effort to keep people in their homes and not um have to displace them. Thank you.
Next, we have our Department of Water and we have Eric with our Department of Water. We can um provide additional details on the lead service line replacement program.
Okay, thank you, Latoya. This is Eric McMillan. I'm Deputy Commissioner of Department of Water Management. I'm here with Patrick. Also, he's with Department of Water Management. He can ask you some, if you have any specific questions, he can cover those. But just as an overview, um as mentioned, Department of Water Management has received fifteen million dollars annually for the C D B G for our uh land service line replacement. Just a brief overview, Department of Water Management mission is to efficiently provide the highest quality of drinking water to this to the Chicago region while protecting our most precious natural resources like Lake Michigan. As part of this fifteen million uh less service line replacement program, this is a we consider considered our equity line service replacement program. Uh, the city of Chicago is offering this free land service replacement to low income homes where the water has lead concentrations above fifteen parts per billion. You may qualify if you're if you own your own home and it's a single family home or two flat. You have a household income below eighty percent of the area median income of seventy four thousand five hundred for a family of four, uh have a persistent elevated lead concentration in your water or have children aged eighteen or younger in your home. Those are some of the qualifying uh parts to it. We also uh uh have a website you can refer to, uh W W dot lead service, savechicago.org. Uh, this information can obviously uh contacted through uh grant services to Latoya. And I'm gonna uh have Patrick, if you want anything you want to add, Patrick, to the program or to this presentation.
Um, the only addition I would add is that any information can be found at let's save chicago.org. If you are or you know someone who does have uh does meet those qualifications of a having a single family home, two flat, homeowner occupied, percent of median area income. I do uh highly encourage you to apply. We do have funds for uh let's ever sign a placement and a unique uh and uh one of a kind uh replacement program throughout the country.
All right, thank you. Thank you um for to all the panelists. Again, um the twenty twenty two action plan is available on the city of Chicago's website. Uh, we included the quick link in the chat. Um, and we also responded to a question on that. If you have any um written comments, you are can please address those to grantsupport@cityofchicago.org. And we also have on one of the earlier slides, um if you want to write a letter to the city, you can use uh or you can send that to, I'm sorry, the Office of Budget and Management at one twenty one North LaSalle, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh two, um and you can address it to Latoya Vaughn. Um, once again, if you want to email your responses, you can email grantsupport@cityofchicago.org. Um, and then we're gonna open this up for any comments that you guys may have on the fiscal year twenty twenty two action plan. I don't see any hands. Um, Erin, could you confirm if you see any on your end?
I do not see any hands on my end either.
All right, um, once again, this this um video, not videos, this presentation is being recorded. Uh, we can also make that available on the website. Um, all of our plans are available on the website. And you can always um email us at grantsupport@cityofchicago.org. Please allow us five business days to respond. Um, and we will post that information on the city of Chicago's website uh for questions and responses to this hearing. Thank you again for everyone who participated and all the panelists. A special thanks to to, uh, sorry, Meredith and Erin for everything that you guys have done to help coordinate um this presentation. So, thanks.
Latoya, there is a hand raised. I saw from Amy Burke. I'm not sure Amy, if you're able, Erin, you can allow her to unmute and either make a comment or ask a question.
All right.
Yeah, so, thank you so much. So I had um two quick questions. What is the Department of Housing or all these departments doing for the people living in uh the encampments? Um, and I know when I was hearing you say what the goals of the Department of Housing are, I was wondering where the encampments uh fit into that.
Can we have somebody from the Department of Family and Support Services to speak to that possibly?
Uh, yeah, this is Raymond Barrett with the Department of Family Support Services. Although I will say, I feel like the question was is directed towards um D O H, but I can just speak briefly about homelessness and the camps in general. Yeah, so so from D F S S's perspective, right, um we work with delegate agencies that do outreach and engagement with encampments and any individual who's experiencing chronic homelessness and attempting to give them case management services or getting them to shelters. And so on the D F S S per side of it, that's how we engage with encampments is periodically engaging with those communities and attempting to give um supportive services where applicable to those individuals. Um, and so that's how we approach the encampments on the D F S S side.
I can add, on the on the D O H side, we're partnering closely with the F S S. Um, a couple of areas where we're starting to work in the space regarding homelessness, those this isn't specifically regarding people who are living in encampments, but um helping to try to start to transition um some shelter spaces into non-congregate shelter um to um hopefully reach some folks who are not comfortable staying in congregate or sort of large uh shelter spaces. And and then uh work through our Chicago Recovery Plan, uh which is outside of this this sort of budget plan that's um related to permanent supportive housing is taking place. So again, that's work that's being addressed. It's just not covered here in the the action plan that was outlined for twenty twenty two through C D B G. Amy, I think you should be able to unmute and and ask him another question.
Yeah, so thank you very much for sharing that. And um I was just wondering, um, is there, so you gave a lot of information. And um I'm wondering if there's a place like for the reports, you know, written reports for all these that that document all the wonderful things that everybody in the city is doing.
Yes, we do have um this information available on that link that you see on the screen. On that link, you will find access to all of our um action plans, which are our proposed plans. And we also have our K A P R, which is our comprehensive annual performance and evaluation report that outlines certain accomplishments of the C D B G program. And we also have um to report on various information for E S for the emergency solutions grant that will fall outside of the K A P R. We can also make that information available on the site. All right, thanks, Amy, um for your questions. And um Erin, do you see any additional hands?
Oh, not at this time now.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, once again, we will be responding um to any follow up that we have from this discussion. And that will be on the city of Chicago's website and you can access that on the link um from this page. And also, we have made that available in the chat. Thank you all for participating in the public hearing uh for the fiscal year twenty one substantial amendment to the action plan, which covers the home A R P as well as the fiscal year twenty twenty two final action plan on proposed projects. So thank you once again to everybody for participating and have a great evening.
Good night, everyone.